Are the chair this evening? Okay, just for background, you know, we've lost the chair. We've lost Dennis Williams. So it's down to the three, you three folks and Peterson, who's not on tonight. And we have a problem. We have a problem that we have. We need members, obviously. So really, tonight's meeting is an organizational meeting to do two things. Elect officers, which I believe would be, if that doesn't happen tonight, that's fine. You know, function, continue to function as is. When I elect officers, that's fine, too. But important, most importantly, what has to happen is we have to appoint or someone has to appoint Mr. Monroe. Was on this, was on earlier. I don't know if he's still listening. Now, I had, does everybody, can people hear me?
I can hear you.
I can hear you. It's Bill DeRozier on.
Yeah, Bill DeRozier's on.
Yeah, it's funny, I'm looking at a screen and there's nobody's picture. So it's, I feel like I'm talking to myself, but you're out there listening, okay. So the primary focus of tonight's meeting is to fill a slot. Now, I just want to, just as very background, you know, we did, we did, we being the town did go through a process. You know, it's in the paper because notice goes to the town committees, et cetera. You know, there's been an effort and Mr. Monroe was good enough to submit a letter. Now, the letter I sent out indicated he was interested in wetlands and he submitted two letters, one for ZBA and one for wetlands. A wrong letter was sent out. But nonetheless, I did speak to him. He's interested in zoning board of appeals and here we are. Oh, I got, I'll shut up. I'll turn this matter over to Mr. DeRozier, Chairman DeRozier.
Well, so is this Mr. Monroe on the call or not?
I do not see him, no.
Was it earlier? I don't know what happened.
Okay, that's too bad because it'd be nice to hear from him tonight. So again, stepping in last second here, as the vice chair. Do we need to vote on his application? Can we vote on his application or what would be the normal thing to do right now, Jim?
Yes. First, you'd need to call the order. Call the order, roll call.
So we want to call it to order right now. So we call it an ordered meeting. It is 7:04 and we're going to call the order, the order, the meeting to order.
Okay, roll call is, would we?
We have roll call, we have Jim, we have Walter, we have Kathleen and we have myself. Mr. Peterson's not on tonight.
Yes. Okay, now you have the agenda up, what, public speak?
I have the, I have the agenda in front of me, yes.
Okay, is there any public there?
There is no public.
Thank you. Or on, are we onto new business now?
I believe we're on to new business.
Okay.
So the election of officers and the filling of vacancies. So I, should we reverse that a little bit and see if we can fill the vacancy first and then elect officers or?
It's your call, Bill. That's fine, no problem with that.
Well, even if you, this is Linda, if you fill the vacancy and the person was on the line, he wouldn't be able to vote or anything because he hasn't been sworn in.
That's right, okay. So I guess at this point, I've read the wrong letter. Is there any different, is there any more information involved, I guess, Jim, in the letter that he submitted for this particular position? Would we learn anything new from that that we need to review or that would help us make a decision?
It was a very similar letter, just that he lived in town. He's interested in serving on, serving on a board, providing some service and that's it.
Okay. So, and again, I'm not used to running meetings, so, you know, my apologies. Is this something that we can ask for somebody to make a motion?
Yes.
To accept Mr. Moser, Mr. Monroe's application and elect and go from there. So do I hear a motion?
Before you make the motion, this is Linda again, your clerk. You have to be a registered voter and you have to make sure that you don't have, that you have party, party representation.
So he has to be on one of the two parties, either the Democrat or Republican Party?
No, he has to be an elect for, so he can be registered either as a Republican, Democrat, independent or another party.
So he has to be a registered voter in town to be on the board.
Right.
And so we don't know that tonight, right?
I, I don't know that.
No, but we, what we've done on other boards is make a motion with that condition and then check that.
Okay, so we can make the motion, if someone wants to word this correctly, to accept Mr. Monroe's application pending on verification of voter registration.
Correct, yes, and.
If somebody wanted to make a.
Go ahead. Address Linda's second part of that. I know, Bill, you're a Republican. All commissions have to have what's called minority representation, which basically means they need one, one Democrat and one Republican. And I believe, Bill, Mr. DeRozier, you, you fill the Republican slot, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm guessing there's a Democrat on the line as a member?
Yeah, I'm a little disgusted with it, but yeah, I am a registered Democrat.
Let's stay off the, let's not discuss.
Is that Walter? Yep. I'm glad to hear you say that, Walter.
I tell you, what a will. I did that after Watergate and Charlie Phelps loved it and my mother was.
Okay, so, so we do.
So we fit that board, we fit that requirement.
You, yeah, we, we do. We have members of each of our wonderful parties, yes.
Beautiful. Okay, so at this point, can somebody make a motion to vote on making Mr. Monroe a member of the board of zoning board of appeals pending verification of his voter registration?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Who is this?
Motion by, by Walter.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other discussion before we take the vote? Oh, I guess I'm sorry, we need a second. I'm sorry, who was that, the second bit?
Kathleen, second motion.
Thank you very much, Kathleen.
You're welcome.
Okay, now are we open to any further discussion? I'll take that as a no. Okay, can we hear all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. DeRozier, Mr. DeRozier, this is Linda again, just another Robert's Rule. Because we're on Zoom, I have to be by roll call voice, so I have to ask each member.
Very good, that makes sense. Okay, so Walter.
Yes.
Aye. Kathleen.
Aye.
Bill DeRozier's, aye. So I believe the ayes have it. It's unanimous, there are no nays.
Okay, this is Jim Halcy. What I intend to do is verify his registration, assuming that that is legitimate. Have a letter go out, comes from the town clerk typically, and that letter will say, you know, you need to stop in and get sworn in. At which time I will provide him a copy of the zoning regs and some background material, minutes, et cetera. He's also a little uncomfortable with, with the technology, as many of us, the advanced years are. And I told him that we would, we'd provide him, we'd help him out on that. It's something we're going to have to get used to.
Right, right. At least for the time being, because we have no idea when we'll be actually meeting in person again, right?
This is Kathleen and I'm just on my phone. I'm sure he has a phone, so he can just call in and be on his phone.
Right.
Right, you don't have to.
He doesn't have to have any.
Yeah, he has, he's got an iPad and we kind of walked, kind of disgusted. He, he was on for briefly this evening. I mean, I saw his face on the screen and I don't know what happened.
Yeah, this is Linda again. It would be beneficial that if you just sent him paper copies of everything before the meeting, so at least he has something in front of him.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and I mean, as, as you all know, transition to the Zoom has not been seamless.
Yeah.
No.
We've done his, we've done a good job. I mean, everybody involved has done a great job.
Right. So we'll need to get Mr. Monroe's email.
Yes.
And.
I do have it.
Yeah. Okay, very good. So we can give that to Kathleen, would you, would you be the one to, or, I'm sorry, Linda, I'm not sure who would be sending that out to him. You know, future, well, Jim, you said you might be actually be able to send him paper copies.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, I think that's my job to make sure that he's, has, you know, the information he needs to adopt. I will take care of it.
Well, and I think, I'm thinking back to the very first meeting that, that I went to, I think we had a couple of new people and at the time we were given quite a bit of an education by, what's his name, Kath? Yeah, John Valente and he brought in another speaker, too, at the time, that kind of talked about the legalities of it, but also kind of the standpoint that, I guess, over time, the way he ran things, the way John ran things was that our job was to actually help people, if you will. It wasn't to be a roadblock to people getting zoning approvals. It was more to review the case, make sure that, you know, there were no issues or problems or people didn't have objections, but it, you know, his stance was always to be as helpful as possible to those people submitting applications for approval. So I'm not sure, John, if he went to the, Jim, if he went to that with you, but at some point, it probably a good refresher for the entire board, just to kind of, I guess, go through the legalities of the position and our responsibilities and our overall, you know, what you're doing things and our goals as part of, as part of being on this board.
And I will, I will do what I can to bring that resource. The, the Connecticut Bar Association Planning and Zoning Committee is very active in that and will, they do provide speakers. They did, and they're great.
Yeah.
And because, and what we've done is involve, you know, other towns, other towns around, Columbia, Hebron, whatever, just because, you know, and they, they sent out three attorneys the last time, you know.
Wow.
They're all very knowledgeable.
Yep.
It's all pro bono, so. They make it, they make a real serious effort to keep town.
Okay.
I mean, in part, you know, it's their, I mean, it's their role as, it was actually Halloran and Sage, who is our land use council. I think all the attorneys were from there. And, you know, part of their job is to keep, keep us out of court, really, or, you know.
That's nice.
It's to make, it's to make things run smoothly and it's, it's, it's better to, land use is better to take a proactive approach than, than a reactive approach. And that's, that's what they do with their outreach.
Okay, so we have on our new business, the filling of vacancies, which we just did. John, Jim, I'm sorry, do we have to fill another position or is that one, the only application we have and we still have one open? Is that true?
Yeah, actually, you know, in retrospect, the motion that was made, that specified whether it was a regular or alternate member. And quite frankly, if you only have, I mean, historically, you might want to reach out to Mr. Peterson and see if he wants to be a regular meeting, regular member versus an alternate. And that's what's.
So he's the alternate right now, so I can reach out to Mr. Peterson? Okay.
And, but, but nonetheless, that's, even if he were to be, choose to be a regular member and the, and the board chooses to nominate him, there's still a slot. So you can certainly put Mr. Monroe in as a regular or an alternate. That's your call. I think you'd have to modify that, that motion, though. Linda, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I mean, I had, I had written the motion as pointing him as a regular member.
Okay, I guess I didn't, I didn't make the differentiation at the time. Okay, and that's, well, there, so we can move on, right?
Yeah, because his letter didn't, his letter indicated, Jim, and you read the letter, that he was looking to be on the board, not as an alternate. He didn't, he didn't state as an alternate, right?
I mean, typically, people come, very often people come on as an alternate because, because the alternates move up as, as, you know.
Most of the time, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but, okay, just to take one more minute. So the committee is still looking for members and we're just taking an approach of reaching out to anybody who might want to do it.
Okay, so is that something where, is that something where we would normally take out an ad in the newspaper or under town, you know, if you look into, no?
We do, we do, it's not an ad, but it's a notice and it's kind of regularly run in the African River East. Which is very effective, to be honest, is personal, personal outreach. Hey, you know, you call somebody that you think might be interested.
Yeah, I was thinking myself. Yeah, I was, I was thinking to myself, there's anybody I know, so I'll get that some thought this week and see if there's anybody else.
What they would do is submit a letter to the town clerk.
Okay.
And she distributes, I think, seems to be she distributes them to the town committees and what have you, and I would get a copy of some and distribute it.
Who, who would be responsible for putting that notice in the paper?
Town clerk. I think she, she'll do it. She does it regularly.
Okay, gotcha.
And the, the website, I believe, has, I'm sure has volunteer opportunities, but I don't think, you know, a lot of people would hesitate, wouldn't really respond to that, whereas sometimes a personal phone call.
Right.
Or whatever.
Reach out to somebody. Okay.
Effectively.
Okay, so I guess, as a point of, you know, going forward, if anybody on this, on this committee would, you know, think about that over the next couple of weeks and, and wants to reach out to people, please do so. I will think about the same thing. So I just want to be clear, going back to the position that we just selected Mr. Monroe to, it is a full position as far as this board is considered? Not, not an alternate? Okay, perfect. And I will talk to Mr. Peterson. Does somebody can, Linda, can you send Mr. Peterson's email or phone information?
Sure.
You have, you have my email address?
I think, yeah. I think I do, yeah.
You know, I have a current, I have a current list of the membership and if, if the membership is available, I mean, that can be shared with groups so that you have everybody's phone name and phone number, no, you know, reference. I can send it to Linda. I will send it to, you must have gotten it from Amanda, right?
Yeah, I do have it.
Okay. Yeah, so if that goes out, then you'll have everyone's. Now, as long as we're on the subject, does anybody need a copy of, a paper copy of the zoning regulations?
Yes.
Okay.
Well.
Did we? Yes, yeah, I would, I would say so. I think I might have, I have some, but I'm not 100% sure, so.
Okay. Kathleen, are you all set or?
Uh, did we get one when we came to that meeting?
I don't know. You're talking about the meeting with the attorneys?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't recall distributing copies, no. I'll mail them out.
Okay, that would be good.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great. So I guess the next thing is, is that I would, do I need to call Mr. Monroe or Mr. Peterson or does somebody else call him and let him know that Mr. Monroe has been elected to the board? Do I do that or how is, how is he notified?
I'll take, the town clerk will notify him, assuming he's, he's a registered voter.
Okay, perfect, okay.
If I noted that, I'm. I did bring that up.
It's just a matter of. Okay, and then it's just a matter of me contacting Mr. Peterson to see if he wants to come on as a full-time member.
Right.
Okay, very good. So the next, the next order of business was election of officers. Could you just, somebody just remind me of what positions are, are open? So we, we need a chairman.
We need a chairman.
Chairman or vice chairman, I believe. I believe that's it.
And, and we're keeping our clerk that we have, right, with Kathleen? Is that correct?
Uh, you're asking if, are we keeping the clerk?
Yeah.
Linda's the clerk, though.
Linda's the clerk.
Kathleen's a full member.
Keep thinking I'm the clerk, I'm not the clerk, I'm just on the board.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, so the two positions, we have our chair and vice chair. Do we have anyone that wants to make a nomination for either one of those positions?
Would you be willing to be the chairman, Bill?
Um, I wasn't planning on it, so if there's anybody else that would like to do it, I would put that out there first.
Okay.
Probably because, the reason I, I volunteer as vice chair is because when this COVID thing changes, which is, looks like for me as my job goes, when I go back to traveling like I normally do, I travel extensively and if you were on the boards for the last year or two that I've been on this board, you would know that sometimes I'm not able to be there only because I do travel. So I feel that vice chair is a good place for me and I would think that somebody that could be a full-time chair would be better suited for that job.
Okay, who, who is Jerry? What is his last name?
Peterson.
Peter, Peterson, Jerry Peterson.
Okay.
But he's the alternate that's coming on.
He's an alternate?
Right now, he's an alternate. We're going to ask him if he wants to and if he's, if he's eligible to become the full-time.
Oh, he's a pretty sharp cookie. He might be good for being a chair if he would be willing to do it. I don't, I don't know. You know, it's kind of sad, but.
Okay, I, I will continue on in the vice chair role for now to.
Right. I understand that.
Why don't we just? Yeah, we'll just roll it over. Absolutely.
If I can just say that, we'll, we'll postpone election of a chair until after we get Mr. Peterson's and Mr. Monroe on board and we can take up the election of officers and then at that time.
Okay, absolutely. There's no, there's no real urgency to it.
Perfect. Now, we have commission open discussion. I can open that up or I could bring up something that's on my mind. I guess I'll open it up to the, to the, to the board first. If there's any other open discussion.
Nope, what's on your mind?
Well, I got a, the email, I guess, from Linda or Amanda, I'm not sure, about the report that's due by September 17th that discusses, you know, the various boards and committees, what they've done, what their goals, what their objectives are, any major milestones. I guess that report needs to be completed in the next few weeks. And again, I probably would need to take a look at last year's, so that I could get a, an understanding of what's there and see how we would want to alternate or change it or keep it the same. And I guess the only other thing that has to go into that report is, you know, any, any, any zoning board of approval of a, you know, that we, that we've seen, that we, anybody that has come before the board that was either approved or rejected, we'd have to, you know, state everybody that's become, you know.
Need a mission statement for this board.
Oh, we need a mission statement?
Yeah, so they can design that tonight and then you can add it to last year's report.
Well, don't we have a mission statement already? So let me take a look and see if I can get that. It must be in last year's report. Is that something that, Linda, something, is that something that?
I, I think the, the current annual report is on the town's website.
It's on the website? Okay, I'll go to the website.
And if not, if not, I would, if not, I would reach out to Amanda and she will email it to you.
Okay, very good. All right, I'll get a copy of that and take a look at that and see how it may need to be modified or updated or if we just want to basically keep it as it is. And then at our next meeting, we can, we can, I guess, vote on that. The problem with that is, is it's due to 17th, so we would have to have another meeting coming up, I guess, next week. I'll be on vacation the week after that, so, is everybody on this board available to have another Zoom meeting next week?
Certainly.
Same night and then that way there I'll have that, and maybe everybody would have a chance to take a look at last year's mission statement, last year's report. And, and then we can, you know, vote on it next week if that's, if that's possible.
Mr. DeRozier, this is Linda again.
Yes, Linda.
I would, I would, I would suggest that you also add to that agenda, developing your meeting schedule for next year, just in the event that you might not meet till the end of the year and that, something that has to be into the town clerk before the end of the year.
I'm sorry, develop the what again?
Your meeting schedule for next year, for next calendar. You have to submit a meeting, you have to submit a meeting schedule to the town clerk for 2021.
Gotcha, okay.
Mission, DeRozier, I, this is, I'd be happy to put together a draft, a proposed meeting schedule. I mean, it's simply, you know, go to the, whatever you need, the third, third Wednesday of the month and see if there's any conflicts, you know, with the, reduce the, you know, paper and, and people, yeah, let's go to, or, I, let's change this date. I'll do that, it's simple.
Okay, great. So is everybody pretty much comfortable on, on the phone tonight with, sticking with Wednesday evenings at 7 o'clock? Does that work for most people?
Sure. That's fine by me.
Okay, great. All right, thank you, Jim, I appreciate that. Okay, so then can we schedule our next meeting for next Wednesday at 7 to discuss the mission statement and our annual report that is due by the 17th and we can get that hammered out next week?
Okay, so that would be September 2nd, Wednesday?
Yes.
7 o'clock?
Yes.
And the same Zoom, do we have a different code or num, or just the same as it was tonight?
It, I believe they change every meeting for whatever reason. I will have to get one and it will get it, I will put it in the agenda.
Perfect, thank you.
Agenda will go out.
All right, so that, we'll get that through the email that would give us the number, the ID.
No, I'm going to send it out to everybody. Okay. Okay. So you're just, send me the list of contact information and the report so I can, or we just make sure that everybody gets a copy of last year's report, so we'll be able to look at it next Wednesday and all, you know, everybody's eyes are on, we can move forward from there.
Okay, Jim Halcy with a question. Did somebody offer to send out their report or am I doing that?
Yes, I thought you said, Jim, or.
I'd be happy to. I'd be happy to do that. I get out last.
You just send out everybody, email out to everybody, that'd be great.
Yes.
So Mr. DeRozier, you need a, you need an actual motion to schedule your special meeting.
Uh-huh, thank you very much. Okay, so would anybody make a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay, Jim, to have a special meeting on September 2nd at 7 o'clock to.
You can just say special meeting.
Special meeting, okay, very good. And we have, we have motion by Walter, does anybody want to second that motion?
I second it.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen.
You're welcome.
Very good. Okay, now we need to hear the person by person?
Yes.
So could I start with Walter first? Is that a yea or a nay on the motion?
Uh, yes.
Okay, Kathleen?
Yea.
Bill DeRozier's, yea. So the yae's have it, okay. All right, very good. Is there any other discussion to come before this commission tonight? I see number seven is the administrative report from the zoning agent. Jim, is that you?
Yes, I have, I do intend. Yes, I have, I, I do anticipate.
Do you have a report?
I do anticipate an application coming forward, and it will be interesting, it'll be, um, involves a plane issue. Um, I will provide all the background at such time as I can get an application and know exactly what.
Very good.
It will require a little, um.
Reading.
And so, right now, um, we don't have any other, um, applications before us, right?
Correct. What I would like to do is, is keep on the agenda, keep on the, the, the same two, filling of vacancies, election of officers, at such time as there. We don't need to. And we just roll it forward.
Yep.
And if you don't, if you want to elect officers next week, you do, and if you don't, no. It'll be on the agenda too.
Yeah, so why don't we leave it on the agenda, and, um, if we can fit that in next week, great. If we have to postpone it again to get the other work done, we can always make that decision next week.
Sounds like a plan.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, do we need to approve the minutes of April?
You can.
We don't have the minutes in front of us.
Um, I think Jim said he e- he emailed him to every, just before the meeting.
Well, I don't have, I don't get email, but I'll prove it. And I'm just gonna need, I'm gonna, I'm gonna need the code to get in next week. So, Jim, send me a packet or I'll come and see you and get it just with a phone number.
You can table that to next week if you wish.
Yeah, that's, that's a pressing issue.
Okay, great, we'll table that to next week and hopefully everybody will have the minutes in front of them next week, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, there is nobody from the public on right now, so, um, we don't have anything there. Is, I guess, the next thing is anybody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
That's Walter. Would anybody like to second the motion to adjourn?
Kathleen will make a motion to second it.
Thank you so much, Kathleen. All those in favor of adjourning, uh, I'm sorry, can't do it that way. Walter, you say yea or nay?
Yea.
Kathleen?
Yea.
Bill DeRozier's, yea. Well, I just want to say thank you to everybody for being on tonight, um, as we rebuild our board, we will get better at this. I know it was tough because we had a, a, a lot of people drop off the board. I know it's tough because we're doing it via Zoom, and for most people, it's not even Zoom, it's just phone. So, I know it's a little clunky, I know we'll get better as time goes on, and I look forward to working with all of you, uh, going forward. So, thank you for your time tonight, and I'll look forward to speaking to everybody, uh, next Wednesday night.
Perfect.
Thanks, Bill, thank you.
Thank you.